Limburg Schools Board of Education Meeting Number 1547 is now called to order. This is a reminder that Limburg Schools currently requires face coverings for all individuals that are in attendance this evening. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Matt, second?
Second.
Second by Megan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our Long Elementary students, Abby and Charlotte, I believe, to come forward and lead us, if you would like, and you can come as well. Stand if you are able. Go ahead, guys.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. So now, we will go to our special recognitions with Long Elementary, so I'd like to invite Dr. Phillips to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Shemia. Thank you, Board of Education and Dr. Lake, for giving Long the opportunity to recognize some amazing people this evening. First, I would like to ask Mrs. Levine to come up here. Sarah Levine is our Library Media Specialist, and I just want to say a few words about her. She is our Teacher of the Year this year. Mrs. Levine has served as Long's Library Media Specialist the past three years. In spite of a pandemic, countless restrictions and obstacles these past few years have imposed on all of us in education, I am in awe of what Mrs. Levine has not only brought to Long Elementary, but to the entire Limburg School District. Instead of using these three years to hold back and just make it through, Mrs. Levine has taken quite the opposite approach. She is using innovation and passion to bring about love for learning for her students and her colleagues. She creates a learning environment that is both safe and conducive to learning. She makes checking out books even more accessible to students through Canvas, and last year during ARC, personally delivering books to all classrooms, as well as making them available to all of our ARC students. She uses her experience for bringing in a former classroom teacher and can make those connections in her lessons, so that students may use what they have learned while in the library back in the classroom. We are so honored to have Mrs. Levine as part of our Long family and proud of all she has accomplished in her short time at Long Elementary.
Sarah, congratulations. Well deserved. What we have for you is a certificate here and a gift certificate to our online Spirit Store, so you can get some Limburg gear. There you go. Congratulations.
And now, Dr. Mack is going to introduce our Support Person of the Year.
Hello. I would like to introduce our Support Staff of the Year, Mrs. Emily Lee. Emily, would you please stand up? Emily wears many hats at Long Elementary and does it all with a smile. She is one of the first people you see when you enter Long and embodies every quality that we want our students and families to practice. She is kind, accepting, and passionate about making an impact in the lives of others. In these unpredictable times, Emily continues to serve as a beacon of light at Long Elementary. Congratulations, Emily. You are so deserving of this honor.
And again, we have a certificate here, and then we also have a gift certificate to our online store, so congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Now I am very honored to introduce Ms. Charlotte Wegman, if you'd like to come up here, please. All right. Charlotte is a fifth-grade student at Long Elementary, and I'm going to read a few words that her teacher, Mr. Clark, wrote about her. Charlotte has made an excellent transition to fifth grade. Her growth mindset helps her achieve ambitious goals, and it helps her see new goals she can set for herself. Charlotte perseveres and even thrives in the face of adversity. Her willingness to make a mistake, reflect on it, and grow from it allows her to build on her relative strengths, which further drives her motivation to remain a lifelong learner. Charlotte is a kind and patient friend whose calm demeanor makes her an excellent teammate in a group project. Thank you, Charlotte, for being an exemplary member of our classroom community.
Charlotte, congratulations. We have a certificate with your name on it, so that's for you, and then we have a T-shirt for you as well. So congratulations. Well deserved. Thank you.
All right. And now, Dr. Mack is going to introduce another student. All right, Ms. Abby, come on up here.
So I would like to introduce Ms. Abby Cato, a fourth grader at Long. I have had the pleasure of knowing Abby and watching her grow since she was in kindergarten. Last year is when we saw a true difference in Abby, as we watched her tackle third grade, virtually. Abby's teacher wrote, "Abby has the true gift of making our classroom feel like a family and not like we were so far away. Abby visited many teachers' classrooms via Zoom and even had teachers come in ours for push and support, and somehow Abby managed her schedule better than I could. The format and expectations were demanding and sometimes seemed ever-changing, but what stood out about Abby was that she never gave up on herself. Even if there were bad days, hard days, days where more energy was needed to complete a task than the energy she had, she found a way to push herself through. Abby's huge heart made it one of the most memorable years for me. I could only hope that this virtual year would be one to remember, and when I started the school year back in person this year, it all felt right when the first person to come visit me was Abby." Abby, we are so, so proud of you.
Here's a certificate with your name on it as well, and then here is a T-shirt, so congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips and Dr. Mack and everyone from Long Elementary. It's one of the better parts of the meeting here to recognize our students in our various schools. So congratulations to all you guys that were recognized tonight, students, teachers, and everyone. Now I will mercifully take a short break, so all of you that came for that part of the meeting, you're welcome to stay, don't get me wrong, but we'll give you a moment to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. It's a good idea. Good try. Yeah. Okay. We'll move now to 5.0, which is Resolutions. We do have two resolutions this evening. The first one was recognizing National School Counseling Week, which is February 7th through 11th. Just take a minute to thank all of our counselors and all our schools. They do tremendous work with the students and everything they do with them and the community, so just take a second. I know everyone up here appreciates the work that they do, the counselors in our schools. The next one is a resolution honoring Limburg Schools as a top district by St. Louis Community College, and I know Dr. Sparks is going to tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah, I'm excited to share this news with our board and our community. Back in 2018, legislation passed that allowed for what we refer to as Core 42 to happen, which essentially says that there are 42 courses that are accessible to high school students that are fully transferable, as they stand, to any Missouri state institution. So what this meant was any course that we offered that fell under the Core 42 umbrella would allow students to have a one-to-one transfer to post-secondary education if they attended a Missouri school. In 2019, we formed a very specific partnership with St. Louis Community College to really expand our programming. We did this around dual-credit offerings. Dual-credit offerings are when our own teachers are teaching the courses, but they are using curriculum that is aligned with what would be taught at St. Louis Community College, and then students can earn college credit for those courses. Additionally, we partnered with the Early College Program, which allows for our juniors and our seniors to have a full-time experience on Merrimack's campus in order to earn credits that are-- they're dual-credits. Students are simultaneously working towards their high school diploma, as well as the potential of their associate's degree at the same time. So some great partnerships have happened over the past few years with regard to that, and that officially started in the 1920 school year, with our students participating in those programs. And then last year, in the 2021-- 2020, 2021 school year, we had the opportunity to continue expanding those programs and opportunities for our students to participate. And a month ago, St. Louis Community College recognized school districts for that participation, and we were awarded with five different awards for our participation. We are top five in St. Louis City and County Region for the most early college students, the most students per dual-credit section, and the most dual-credit offerings. On top of that, we are first in the amount of students who are taking dual-credit courses overall in the city and the county. So we have more students than any other district in the city and the county who have accessed dual-credit offerings in the 2020-21 school year. Additionally, as a result of all of these programs, our families have saved over $900,000 in college costs. That is the top school district savings in all of the county and the city, so when we looked at the total aggregate as a region, there was about $5 million in savings. We are almost $1 million of that with our Limburg families. So definitely something worth celebrating and something that we are really proud to share with the community.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I think Dr. Amy Mead is here. There she is. And so I get this-- I get this right. He's going to come out for a photo. So I get this right. Dean of Arts and Communications at Community College at Merrimack, so we just want to express our gratitude for these tremendous opportunities you're giving for students and, I mean, and the cost savings for families, and this program's phenomenal. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
I do just quickly want to give a public acknowledgement for teaching and learning, and especially Dr. Zagora. She's taken this on and really built this program with Dr. Sparks, and so this opportunity for our kids and the dollars that saves our families on tuition. You know, just a quick story about our early-to-college kid. We brought him in. We had a conversation with him, and one of them shared with us that I went there for one year, so I would only have to pay three years of out-of-state tuition. So giving those opportunities for our kids, and so I just want to publicly say thank you for your hard work. So we're going to get a quick picture. We'll put you in the middle, and Ronnie and I will be on each side.
All right. We have none tonight on Agenda Items. We do have a few on non-Agenda Items, so we'll get to those a little later in the meeting. So that moves to 7.0, which is Communications. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I missed that part of it. So do I have a motion to approve the resolutions as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jen, second by Kristi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So go to Communications. So, the Secretary.
Okay. Calendar of Events. January 24th is our next Technology Board Advisory Meeting, and January 28th, there is no school-- and listen clearly-- through pre-K through 5. So middle school and high school will be in attendance, as we have one day a year where it's off, and the elementaries are out and middle school and high school are in, and it's January 28th. The Virtual Parents Speaker Series will be held February 1st, and I think that's about kindergarten. Is that correct?
We just had kindergarten.
Oh, sorry.
This last week.
A new one.
But the recording is live, for those who missed it.
Okay, good. So watch for that on February 1st. February 7th through 11th is National School Counselors Week. February 10th is Student Life Board Advisory, and the 15th, there's Finance and another Personal Parent Speaker Series. And on February 17th, we're back together for another Board of Education meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
7.02, this is where we have a report of meetings, so if there's any community meetings, district meetings, other sort of meetings pertaining to your work here or the work in the community or district, now's the time. If anybody has anything. I know it's been a little slow probably this last month, but--
Been slow in zooming or moving.
Right.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll move to 7.03, which is Announcements. We have three announcements. I don't know if you have those, or you'd like me to do those? You don't have them? So the answer is that, right there. So first, the announcement of the Board of Education Candidates. So filing did officially close December 28th of 2021 at 5:00 p.m. There were four candidates that filed for the two three-year terms. The names that will appear on the ballot are as follows. David Randleman, Jennifer Miller, Carrie Clay, and Julia Voss. So those are the four candidates for the two open three-year terms. Next is the announcement of the Board of Education Candidate Forum. That forum will be held on March 14th at 6:30 p.m. That's where those candidates will have an opportunity to share their views with the community, and the community will also have an opportunity to submit questions for that forum. That's going to be held at Person in the central office and also right here in this location, and it will also be streamed on the district's YouTube channel as well. Lastly, and very importantly, Limburg Leaders Nominations for 2022. I know this is a big deal for Beth here, and all of us, actually, but any community member you want to nominate individually for this distinguished award, you can do that now through January 28th. Is that correct?
That's correct. Through next Friday, and you can nominate individuals on our website, so if you go under our website, we have a link there.
Okay. Please do that. If anybody you feel is deserving, please nominate them through the website. Thank you, Beth. All right. Back to you, Madam Secretary, for the Agenda Items.
Okay. As we talked about, our next Board of Education meeting will be February 17th at 7:00 p.m. And the agenda is tentative, but it will include business items, human resource report, financial report, consent items, communication plan report, and regulatory student program evaluation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have no member appointments this evening, so we'll move to the MSBA Report for January. So, Colin?
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of January. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the food supply chain crisis that continues to plague school food service programs in Missouri and throughout the nation. Due largely to staffing shortages, a number of food distributors have reduced or eliminated service to school districts this year, significantly impacting the availability of food items. The situation is resulting in smaller menus and fewer food options for students. Jenna Canuth is the Director of Food and Nutrition Services for the North Kansas City School District and a board member of the Missouri School Nutrition Association. She says the food shortages that began last year are continuing this year.
A lot of those manufacturers just stopped producing their K-12 line. Some ramped back up this year. Some are saying they can't because of labor. So there are a lot of shorts that are going into the distributor, and they can't even get what they need to serve us on top of their labor issues, on top of our labor issues.
Canuth says, "In addition to supply chain problems, the cost of food that is available to school districts has risen by 15% or more. A recent survey by the National School Nutrition Association found 75% of school meal programs cite higher costs as a significant challenge." The survey says only about half of school meal programs nationwide found increases in the reimbursement rate from the U.S. Department of Agriculture to be sufficient to cover those increased costs. Canuth says the food shortage issue is a complicated one that is not likely to improve much in the near future.
When we can't get something from one of the distributors, we try to get it from another distributor, or we try to get it direct ship from the manufacturer. So that means that their-- the previous sales that they have to us fluctuate substantially, and so the manufacturer doesn't know who to send our products to, right? But we have to try to get that food anyway. So it's just, it's a little bit of a mess, and we're definitely looking forward to when things calm down.
Canuth says, "Fortunately, the federal government has given schools some flexibility for school meal patterns that dictate what meals must contain and how they must be delivered." She adds, "The food supply challenges are coming at a time when school food service programs are facing staffing problems of their own." The recent school shooting in Michigan that left four students dead has once again brought focus to the issue of providing our students and staff with a safe learning environment. The founder of a group called Safe and Sound Schools, Michelle Gaye, addressed the issue of school safety at the recent Safe Schools and Colleges Forum, sponsored by MSBA's Center for Education Safety. She lost her daughter on December 14th, 2012, in the Sandy Hook School tragedy. Gaye told the audience, "It's essential that schools adopt a comprehensive approach to school safety."
One that includes mental and behavioral health resources and programs, our school counselors, our school psychs, our SEL programs, health and wellness, very much at the forefront right now, right? Our school nursing programs, school-based health clinics, making sure that kids are coming to school with full bellies, and that we are reducing stress as much as we possibly can. The physical safety and security, obviously based on my story, you know what a priority that is for us. Culture, climate, and community that includes everybody, that brings everybody in and ensures that whoever you are, whatever your experiences are, you at least feel safe here in this building. You're all welcome here. Leadership, law, and policy, the guiding principles of any school safety program. And of course, the last cornerstone operations in emergency management, where a lot of that day-to-day drilling, training, all of those procedures and plans fall.
The Safe and Sound Schools organization advocates for and provides research-based education tool and resources to ensure the safest possible learning environment for children and educators. The 2022 regular session of the Missouri Legislature convenes this month, and education bills are likely to be a major part of the legislative agenda this year. MSBA's priority for the 2022 session of the General Assembly include legislation to ensure a safe education environment for all children, funding to ensure adequate resources for all districts to meet state and federal standards, opposition to legislation moving school board elections from April to November, and requiring school board candidates to run as a member of a political party, and legislation supporting the expansion of and access to high-capacity broadband internet services throughout Missouri. MSBA will keep you informed about legislative developments during the session through our weekly Legislative Voice newsletter, our daily updates on Twitter through critical issue alerts, and through periodic webinars. And don't forget to register for MSBA's Legislative Forum, set for March 7th in Jefferson City. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right. Thank you, Colin. We'll move on to 8.0, which is Special Reports, so we'll start with Joelle.
Yes. I had both my facility planning meeting this last week and also school finance, which is prior to every board meeting, but the work at the Facility Planning Advisory Group was really the meat of their role, is at this time of year, we-- all of the buildings have submitted their capital project requests, which are improvements to their building facility or large equipment. They've submitted that on the timeline, which was due December 15th. All of those are prioritized and reviewed for work coming up this summer. And it's not really just work this summer, but if it's things that are costly or we know that we're going to need more time to do, we're also building that future bond issue list. You know, our capital improvements are done primarily through bond issues. If it's really expensive, we don't use a lot-- have a lot of operating money to devote to capital projects. So every year, this just adds more to our bond issue, future bond issue list, so it keeps everything on the table. So that was done. Dr. Lake talked a little bit about Prop R and some other initiatives that we're doing in the district. The Finance Committee talked about tonight's board meeting. We went in-depth on some finance topics, local tax revenue and state money, and some of that information will be coming through to the board and to the public in the next few months, as we end one budget year and get ready to start another.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to Dr. McKinney for HR.
Yeah, the HR team met. We talked a little bit about the current COVID, you know, trends and how that's impacting staffing in our schools. We also talked about the new dashboard format for giving daily snapshots of the impact of COVID, and then we reviewed the monthly personnel report. That was our meeting.
All right. Thank you. And Dr. Sparks, for your trio.
I only have two tonight. Technology has not met since our last meeting. Student life did meet last week, and we continued our review of social-emotional screeners. So we reviewed Panorama. The previous month, we had reviewed Satchel Page-- Satchel Pulse, sorry. And we also went into conversation about the merit and also the consequences of potentially creating our own screening tool, and the consensus around that was that we should really look at things that are already vetted, that have the research base behind it. So we went down that and opened that conversation, but the group unanimously felt like it was not an appropriate next step for consideration. The Teaching and Learning Board Advisory met on Tuesday, and we had teacher guests join us to give an overview of the elementary literacy pilots that are currently in play. We have four programs, four resources that are being piloted in primary, and then two that are being piloted in grades three through five. One of those resources actually overlaps K-5, but the other ones are different programs between primary and elementary. So our teachers were on in order to demonstrate and share kind of the big ideas around what is provided and what their experiences so far have been. As we shared with the advisory, this is the first step to the conversation, just building a foundational knowledge of what are the programs that we are reviewing, so that-- so that we can delve in deeper in conversations as we continue the work going into next year.
All right, thank you. So we'll move to 9.0, and this is actions, items by consent. We have 9.01 to 9.11. Wouldn't anyone like to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve consent items? 9.01 to 9.11 noting there are none in 907 and 908.
So moved.
Motion by Megan, second?
Second.
Second by Jennifer. And any questions or comments?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
And, you know, and Brian, this is regarding the Green Light Plan. And, you know, I didn't mean to yank this or anything, pull it, but just for the benefit of folks here at our public meeting, would you mind just giving a real quick snapshot report on COVID trends in the district in terms of staffing, in terms of students, and so forth?
Sure. Well, staffing has been impacted certainly by the Omicron variant, but we are seeing good trends in the most recent days. And so according to St. Louis County data, the county positivity rate seems to have peaked about last Thursday, Friday, and then each day this week, it's been incrementally coming back down. Unfortunately, we still are, are, are having a challenge with, with having staff in the buildings. And so we are working through that, but the staff's been amazing. People chipping in, stepping up to do things outside of their comfort zone to cover for their colleagues, pulling together to make sure we've got a safe environment for students. And so it has been a challenge, but we are making it work, and our staff is doing great things in the buildings. I visit the buildings often. I know that everyone else here does too, particularly Dr. Lake. And to see principals serving food in the cafeteria or a teacher sitting at the front desk to answer phones for an hour because someone's out is really pretty inspiring. And so staff's pulled together to keep things moving in the right direction. The data also moving in the right direction. So right now, I'm, I'm on that cautiously optimistic side of things, but that's, that's kind of my view.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because I, I've been told that one of our medical advisors to the district has said that it looks like this, you know, the Omicron variant could be washing through pretty soon. And let's hope for that so we can get back to, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
I have a question for Joelle about the self-serve, the new self-serve station. So it said we are losing one, but we're purchasing one. So I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
What was going on with that?
Well, we're losing one, the high school is losing a food service à la carte station because we are going to use the gifted center now for the PEGS program. So right now, for the open concept at the high school, there is a station in the library, and we have high school students that use that for lunch. I mean, it's a very popular station, truthfully. So with the gifted center project coming on board and the library being closed, removing the library this summer into the new portion of the building, that station will no longer be available. And so there is a location in the current cafeteria on the, in the, near the commons that has been unutilized by the cafeteria staff. It's a little hole in the corner of the, you know, that just has junk and chairs and stuff back there. We're going to make that a nice new station to replace the one that really is, we're not losing. It's just going to be served in a different purpose for different kids.
Okay, so the library one's staying in the library, but will be for the gifted center children?
But it will only be, that will be a totally different food service program because those will be, you know, not high school kids. So that campus will be, you know, they won't have, the high school kids won't have access to the gifted center at lunch, so.
Thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries, seven zero. 10-0, individual action items. We have none. 11-0, we have no reports there either. So 12-0 is for our citizen comments regarding non-agenda items. So at this time, we have three folks signed up. We'll hear the comments. And we'll start with Maki Randleman and comments on library policy.
At the immigration interview, I was questioned about what I would teach my children. This is, should I move or? I'm so sorry. I was asked, what would I teach my children to preserve American values? And I answered, "America offers freedom that does not exist in other countries. Freedom is for every person and comes with responsibility. We cannot violate other people's freedom. So my responsibility is to teach my children to honor the freedom of others while we enjoy this real opportunity. I lived in Japan and in Israel and here in the U.S. Let me simplify what the freedom is. It is an ability to choose. We will live the consequences of our choices, but we can choose what to believe, what occupation to have, what values to hold to shape our lives and pursue happiness. It becomes confusing when so-called freedom violates other people's freedom. At that moment of removing other people's ability to choose, it is not freedom anymore. American Library Association claims Bill of Rights and calls it freedom of speech to furnish any material, regardless to the reader's maturity, age, or beliefs. What is lacking is the choice of not reading them, which is also freedom of readers. When it comes to the school library, where the readers are minor children, the parents have the freedom and responsibility to allow or restrict access. It is the responsibility of parents to guide according to their conscience and values. The suggested new board policy language prohibits parents to place restriction to other families' children, which I agree. The other side, the other side of the same coin is that the school shall not allow access to the content that families do not consent to. Schools shall not undo what families do at homes. Last month, you voted to retain two books without restriction. It removed that freedom. It brings our family to opt out from some of the library services because I do not consent any adult to allow my child to access X-rated content or information of how to set up and use Tinder or Grindr to engage strangers. Other books in the library have content such as sexual experience to imitate a porn movie star, graphic image or description of nudity, rape or molestation of minors, and so on. My children are excluded from the library services because of our moral values. But our value is a guaranteed freedom by the Constitution, isn't it? My children, uh, my children are ex, uh, I'm sorry. Was your vote inclusive? Did it shape good quality of education? Does it allow variety of choices? The answer is no. Call to action for you tonight. Make the library services at Lindbergh with a variety of choices. Let the liberty and justice for all rule the educational services for all families in our community. Thank you.
Um, next, John O'Fallon Bell, also on suitability of books.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me participate in this public comment session of the meeting tonight. I trust you got my email and my attachment that I sent you in advance of this meeting. The content of my public comment really is best described as old business. The last Board of, Board of Education meeting on December 16th, you were asked to confirm review committee's recommendations for supporting the use and the presence of Handmaid's Tale as well as gender queer, both either in the classroom or in the library. What was a little unsettling from my perspective, and I have held executive positions and run meetings, and when you have a vote of this magnitude, to think that it should be a voice vote, I think is far too low from an acceptable standard. So let me entertain and indulge you, and let's correct the record so that there's no inference, no deduction as to how this board voted on these issues. So I wanted to essentially represent the public in how this voted. The first request for consideration was the Handmaid's Tale classroom use. Ayes and nays? Mike Shima? Aye. Jennifer Miller? Aye. Kristy Watts? Aye. Dr. Mike Tischlis? Nay. Matt Alonso? Aye. Kathy Lorenz? Aye. Megan Vedder? Aye. The second request has to do with Handmaid's Tale library use. Mike Shima? Aye. Jennifer Miller? Aye. Kristy Watts? Aye. Mike Tischlis? Nay. Matt Alonso? Aye. Kathy Lorenz? Aye. Megan Vedder? Aye. The third consideration has to do with gender queer library use alone. Mike Shima? Aye. Jennifer Miller? Aye. Kristy Watts? Aye. Matt Alonso? Aye. Mike Tischlis? Nay. Kathy Lorenz? Aye. Megan Vedder? Aye. It really is incumbent on you as elected officials to be clear as to what your intentions are. And I hope in the future, any book that is subject to review and a vote, any issue that is an important issue that the community is divided on deserves to know where you stand, because after all, you're being held accountable to the public. And thank you.
Thank you. For the record and with respect to my father, it's Shamia.
Okay.
Thank you.
I apologize.
No, I'm just... Uh, last person we have speaking is Kim Swinson on equity.
Good evening. I've been an educator for 20 years. My family's lived in Lindbergh since 2007. My son graduated from LHS, and another one's a senior. I want to let you know, though, that the teachers and staff are not okay. They're not okay. They're still teaching in a pandemic. They're transitioning online, caring for their loved ones, children that are sick, getting sick themselves, supporting and covering colleagues that are sick or out. I could go on and on and on of the 5,000 things they're doing. They're dealing with negativity coming from some in our own community and beyond that are trying to ban books, believe the district and teachers are trying to indoctrinate their children, and have a negative view of equity in education. So let's start with banning books under this ruse of profanity and sexuality. Diverse literature creates empathy, which we desperately need right now. Books should provide a mirror for children, a world where they can see characters and themes that reflect their own identities and experiences. Students should also be exposed to characters and stories that are different and connect with different lives, customs, and beliefs. Some have issue with equity, and I would invite them to read research. It's crucial for teachers to address any barrier students face to succeed in school. Equity in schools is the answer to supporting every student, not just a few. Everyone has the opportunity to succeed regardless of their original circumstances. The benefits of being in an equitable classroom extend to that higher academic achievement for all that we're looking for in Lindbergh. Equity can also strengthen a student's health and social emotional development and makes for an environment where the students are comfortable and they have better emotional regulation. Has Lindbergh moved in this direction? Yes, I've seen it. It should. Some teachers and school staff are being accused of indoctrinating students. If you think teachers have time to indoctrinate a child with a book, you have never been in a classroom or had a teenager. Some teachers and school staff are dealing with other people outside, like my own representative, David Gregory, who favors charter schools that stipend money from our own public schools. He's trying to ban CRT in schools with a new bill. CRT is not taught in K through 12 schools. He can't even explain what it actually means. Gregory made a point, so the key to his bill was that it was going to have enforcement. What does that mean? Will teachers be held to some enforcement? To me, that's more waste of time that takes away from the real job of teaching, takes away our tax monies spent on lawyers that should be going for teachers' salaries, lower class sizes, and supplies for instruction. Sadly, no one actually listens to teachers when they're talking about teaching. It's time to stop demonizing teachers and staff, and I would encourage you to substitute for a teacher in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who commented and addressed the board this evening. And we'll continue with the remaining agenda items. So 13.0 is recess. We've already conducted our executive session, so there's no need for that. So we'll move to 15.0, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Board meeting number 1547.
So moved.
Motion by Kathy, second by Mike. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. All right, motion carries, seven zero. Board meeting 1547 is adjourned.